All right, I'm going to call to order the regular council meeting here on Monday, May 2. We are at the W C O'Neil Arena in our, I guess, temporary council chambers. We're trying out new space. However, this is also going to be streamed through Zoom and Facebook. And of course, our friends at CHCO are here, which we greatly appreciate. We'll get into the recording of attendance. I note that all members of council are in attendance. Counselor Neal is joining us virtually for those that haven't seen him on the screen. So welcome, Counselor Neal. And I just wanted to start off by recognizing that we are on the unseated traditional territory of the Pesco Two Mogadi people. Let's get into the approval of the agenda. Can I have a mover to approve the agenda? I've got Counselor Heenan and seconded it by Deputy Mayor Akeji. Any discussion on the agenda this evening? Checking on the screen, we're good there. So all in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody that has been carried. And at this point, we'll get into disclosure of conflict of interest. I see Counselor Hurdle with his hand up.
Yeah, it's regards to F A two-two zero-five zero-five. Not that there's an issue between myself and town, but just because of my day job, I'll just sit that one out.
Okay, perfect. I'll look for you to recuse yourself at that time. I assume that you'll be headed down maybe the hall that way or there. I'm not sure, but just run and duck, okay? So we are going to get right into presentations this evening because we do have two. I'll ask that our presenters, we're very grateful that they're there, but to please try to keep the presentation around 10 minutes, simply the fact that we have a lot of motions after. And we're going to try to keep this meeting under two and a half hours. So the first presenter is actually with Eastern Charlotte Waterways, Lee Penny. It's the presentation on the climate change in the Shamcook watershed. And it has updated predictions and their implications. And it's part of the Environmental Trust Fund grant. So at this point, we'll pass the floor over. Believe they're online. Lee, can you hear us? Lee, can you hear us? We can't hear Lee. Just bear with us one sec. We're working through some tech challenges right now. Hold on, Lee. Lee, we'll come back to you.
And that's it. Thanks for having us here tonight. So as Mayor said, Kim Reader is my name. I don't know if I've met all of you. And Matthew Dixon, longtime local. He's from town, I'm from Buckland, but I care about town. And that's what we're here for. What we're hoping for tonight is to interest you in supporting us as volunteers. We're not associated with any organization. We're just two people who care and have been talking about different things going on in the town. And Matthew has some knowledge about and has participated in events called speed friending events. I think it's a take on the speed dating, but that's not our intent. Our intent is speed friending. And basically, what we're understanding is that not everyone in St. Andrews still knows each other. For a long time, I feel that we did. And we have a lot of fantastic new locals coming into town. And we want to try to give an opportunity for folks to meet each other. And that's not always easy. And sometimes, meeting new folks is awkward. So we want to try at least to change that a little bit. And we are offering a pilot, which Matthew will tell you about the logistics of how that would go. And then I'll come back and clarify what our ask actually is.
Yeah, so speed friending is pretty easy. It's basically just getting people in a room and rotating them around. There's a few different ways you can do that. You need a couple of people to organize and steer people. But other than that, it's just tables, chairs, and refreshments if possible, and a venue like a tent. And we talked to, well, maybe, do you want to talk? You talked about Luke McDonald.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, so Luke McDonald said he was interested in having it as part of Paddle Fest. And we've got, I think, 90% or 100% sure.
Ninety.
90% sure. May 20th, that's a Saturday, 10 to 12.
It's a Friday.
Friday. It's Friday. So in the Paddle Fest tent downtown. And he's likes the idea. He said for sure next year, he'd like to have it too. It fits in with their theme. And also the Algonquin, their gazebo, outdoor gazebo, they've, they're willing to have that too as a place to do it. Because we'd want to do it outside if possible, because then if COVID restrictions come back, we could still possibly have the event. So that's, yeah. Advertising, we're looking for sort of, I guess, help with advertising too.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, as Matt said, we've got 90% agreement from Paddle Fest organizers. We just have to make sure that we don't interfere with our sound check people to have a morning event where we'd have coffee and tea. And then sometime in June on a weekday, and maybe we would try an evening as opposed to a daytime event. The Algonquin, we're in conversations with Nicholas. And, and he seems very positive about that as well, as far as in-kind. It may be the casino patio, it may be the gazebo, it may be the actual hotel patio. But as Matt said, one of the interests is having it outdoors. You know, and a lot of us have been putting on events. And if you, you know, if COVID comes back, you've got issues. If you've got rain, you've got issues. So we need covered and we need outdoors to make it run as smoothly as possible. So for the two pilots, what we're looking for now that we actually have venues pretty much under wraps, what we're looking for is help with advertising. So CHCO, hopefully, whatever else the town has, whether it puts it on its website or Facebook as well, we would like you to support the coffee and tea budget. So what we have done, we had a phone conversation with Paul. He suggested we could apply for the community fund. So what we've done is we passed that in today. I know that there is a 60-day preference to have that in before the timeline. However, everything's just moving so fast and successfully that we'll just put it in tonight. But the thing with that, because we are not an organization, one thing I would be comfortable with is that we expense, if you agree to a maximum of 150, and then we just get reimbursed, as opposed to you just handing over 150 or per event, which you may not be comfortable with. And I guess the only other thing is to say that we'd like to try these two. We can report back to you if you're interested. And then if they're going well, maybe we try some more throughout the community. And at that time, we might be looking for the support of a venue from you in case we, you know, we might need to look at some other places. And that is our ask for tonight. And we welcome, of course, any questions.
Did you mention the 30 to 60 people roughly?
Yeah, that's what we're hoping for. Right now, we're trying to figure out the logistics of it. You know, when you get people to register events, that's, it creates commitment. However, then you're excluding people who might want to join at the last minute as they pass by. So we're figuring out a few of those things. We would definitely take advice at this point, right now. As I said, we're not part of a committee, so we'll just make decisions unless somebody else wants to volunteer. But yeah, so we're thinking, you know, aiming for 30 to 60 people, discussing registration and how that might impact the event, good or bad.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much for the presentation this evening. So I guess before we open up questions to council, would the preference be that council decides this, or is there a budget that staff actually could access where they actually don't need a formal motion from council?
Excuse me, your worship, but council gives instructions. Probably would have to, for the minimal amount it is, staff can move ahead if council supports the motion. Be sure to buy that tea and coffee.
Perfect. So I can just say that us having a lot of new residents, it's a great idea. We're very fortunate that we've had so many new people join our community. And there's a lot of people I personally, and I know other members of council, haven't met. So good on you for finding a way to get social. And of course, in dealing with the pandemic times, it's been even more challenging for people to get out there and meet people. So the fact that you're putting on an event and encouraging people to build connections is a good thing. I'll open up to council if you have any questions, anyone from council? It's pretty straightforward, but making sure. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Akeji.
Could you just tell me what time it is?
Oh, stupid. Oops, one of these buttons. Oh, I did it. Green is good.
Yeah, green is good. Turn the light on.
Yes, so right now, we're at 90% sure that it will be between 10 and 12, which should be on a Friday, May 20th. We, actually, and I-
Friday's the 19th, isn't it? 18th is Thursday.
Nope, 20th is Friday. I've got my calendar.
What do I know?
So the one other, I did forget the one other part of our ask. And the other part of our ask, would that be that you, if you're able to attend and make sure that other community members you know attend? Because we'd really like to have some old locals as well as new locals. It might, you know, attract more of the new folks, but we need to have that whole community effort, so.
Sounds good. I'm 90% sure I'll be there. Any other questions from any member of council?
I lost my train of thought when I didn't ask the first time.
Give you a moment.
Yeah, I've got Alzheimer's. I didn't turn this.
The other one, the other event, because we want to hold two, the other one, the date isn't determined. So that's probably why you don't have it written down, yeah.
That's the Algonquin one?
Yes, yes.
But for this one, it's at Paddle Fest and it's downtown in the tent?
Yeah.
And it's between 10 and 12?
Yes. And what we'll have to do with that, I think, because of the logistics of a speed friending event, is actually, we probably won't, we'll have to figure out the wording so that it starts at 10. Because if you have people coming in, like, you're switching chairs and such, so it actually is an event with a timed start, the end will be a little open. But the start, we kind of, it's a, yeah, it's not a drop-in.
It might not take the whole two hours. It could just be like an hour, maybe an hour and a half, and then time to mingle afterwards with peoples. You found connections and talk amongst themselves for a bit.
Perfect. Council, anyone have any concern? I think the $150 for a event like this for a pilot seems very worthy to me. I don't think we need much of a debate on that one. Any concerns? You've got your 150, you've got the town support. We'll make sure to post it and really appreciate you coming in and presenting tonight. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good time.
All right, we will switch back at this point to the first presentation, which again is Lee Penny, who is with Eastern Charlotte Waterways, which is doing a presentation on the climate change in Shamcook watershed and its updated predictions and their implications environmentally. And it was done through a trust fund grant that was made possible by the town. So at this point, can Lee Penny, can we hear at this point? Are we still having any tech challenges?
Yeah. Well, we can see him.
Bear with us here, we're having a little bit of technical difficulties. If not, we can always try again after the minutes. There's a few we have to approve. All right, we will come back to that. Maybe Mr. Nopper, if you just want to let me know when that's, we'll just start going through the agenda. So we're going to get into the approval of minutes. First foremost is, anybody see any changes to any minutes before I go through them quickly? I always like asking that so we can go through them quicker. All right, I'm not seeing any. So the first minutes that I'll be looking for a mover is of the 22-03-30 special council meeting on Wednesday, March 30th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Could I have a mover for those minutes? I've got Counselor Blanchard and seconded it by Counselor Heenan. All in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody, those have been carried. The next one is the minutes of public hearing objections for the draft zoning bylaw, Z22-01, which was Monday, April 4th, 2022. Once again, looking for a mover. Got Counselor Hurdle, seconded by Deputy Mayor Akeji. All in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody. Next one is the minutes of the regular council meeting on Monday, April 4th, 2022 at 6:45 PM. Could I have a mover? I've got Counselor Heenan, seconded by Counselor Hurdle. All in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye. That's everybody. And then we have the minutes of the public hearing of objections to MP 20-05 and Z21-09 for rezoning of 258 Montague Street on Tuesday, April 19th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. I've got Deputy Mayor Akeji moving and a second would be Counselor Blanchard, feel like an auctioneer. All in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody. And the last ones are the minutes of the regular council meeting on Tuesday, April 19th, 2022 at 6:45 PM. A mover, please. I've got Deputy Mayor Akeji and seconded it by Counselor Hurdle. All in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye. All minutes have been approved. At this point, we will switch over to some communications. Just give me a minute to get caught up in the package from that. So the first one that I wanted to bring forward was the, yes?
Just, we're good to go back to you.
We're good to go back, okay? We'll just quickly do communications and jump back. So the first one is the longest day of smiles, which is June 19th. So they're hoping that we proclaim June 19th, 2022 as the longest day of smiles in our community. The longest day of smiles encourages community ambassadors to raise awareness and funds to help a child born with a cliff condition smile and change their life with free, safe cliff surgery and comprehensive care. From sunup to sundown, from coast to coast, Canadians are dedicating June 19th, 2022, and the time leaning up to it to help children smile. So I'll be looking for a mover actually because of this communication, because we don't want to delay it much more. It's, I call this a friendly amendment, but could I have someone move to proclaim it? I've got Counselor Heenan and seconded it by Deputy Mayor Akeji. Any discussion on that? Seeing nothing. Okay, perfect. All in favor of approving that motion, please signify by saying aye. Perfect. So we officially have, will proclaim June 19th, 2022 as the longest day of smiles in St. Andrews. There's no proclamation, but I'm sure we can get that up and have that posted after the fact. The second communication is in regards to the International Day Against Homophobia and Transphobia, which is May 17th, 2022. And for last year's International Day Against Homophobia and Transphobia, pride flags were sent out in every municipality in Quebec. For this year, they're trying to reach out to every municipality in Canada. This will send a strong message to the government that the population stands with the LGBTQ plus community. And they're inviting us to adopt a resolution as a municipality. So I do have that resolution and you do as well in your council package. I'll be looking for a mover to adopt that resolution. I've got Counselor Hurdle and seconded it by Counselor Blanchard. Any discussion on this particular request? Seeing none, so all in favor of approving that motion, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody. So the Town of St. Andrews Resolution on the International Day Against Homophobia and Transphobia. Whereas the Canadian Charter of Human Rights and Freedoms recognizes that no one can be discriminated against based on sexual orientation or gender identity or expression. Whereas Canada is a social, open to everyone, including lesbian, gay, bisexual, and trans people, and to all other people who identify with sexual diversity and the multiplicity of gender identities and expressions. Whereas despite recent efforts towards greater inclusion of LFBQ plus people, homophobia and transphobia are still present in society. Whereas May 17th is the International Day Against Homophobia and Transphobia, is celebrated as such in many countries and is the result of Quebec-based initiative promoted by the Foundation Emergence starting in 2003. Whereas there is no reason to support the efforts of the Foundation Emergence in holding this day, now therefore be it resolved that the Town of St. Andrews hereby proclaims May 17th, 2022 as the International Day Against Homophobia and Transphobia and recognizes this day as such. Now therefore, I Brad Henderson, Mayor of the Town of St. Andrews, support the proclamation of International Day Against Homophobia and Transphobia signed May 2nd, 2022, and the witness whereof I have set my hand and caused the seal of mirrality of the Town of St. Andrews to be affixed here too. So thank you, council, for your support on that one. And at that point, we are done communication and we will go back to the presenter, the third time hopefully is the chair.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. We're excited to hear you.
Okay, great. I did have a slideshow prepared, but I'm kind of wary about it now and trying to avoid technical difficulties. Would you like me to share my screen or I could just kind of talk about the project that we did with the watershed?
Lee, go ahead and share your screen. Should be all right there. The connection seems good.
Sorry, I don't see the, usually there's a, okay, there it is. Sorry. Yeah, so I'll just give some context to the project and what it was that we actually did, go over some key findings really quickly, just kind of provide a summary and then we'll have room for questions. So, yeah, this was a project that was funded by the Environmental Trust Fund. That's a provincial fund. And it's made to complement what the province is doing in their own project. They call it the Shamcook Improvement Project. So that's being undertaken by the Department of Environment and Local Government. So they're going to be looking at updating the water budget, a feasibility of alternative water sources, and in addition to some data gaps. And so our project in complementing that, we wanted to look at the sixth assessment reports that just came up from the IPCC, get a sense of what those projections are going to mean regionally. And we also wanted to look at surface flows. So we took the drone out, we looked at some of the beaver dams, that collapsed culvert that's over there by Gibson Lake. And we also produced something called intensity duration frequency curves. So those, they're kind of complicated to read at first, I find, but they tell you how precipitation patterns are expected to change over time. So what we did, we just kind of went through the new report from the IPCC that at the time of the project, it was the physical science basis that was out. The other two have come out since then. And then we use the online, it's called the IDF CC tool, and the CC stands for climate change. Because IDF curves are used, you know, by engineers and stuff all the time. But this particular online tool that was developed by the University of Western Ontario, it factors in climate change inputs modeling. So it's been really, really handy. And then we combine the drone footage with something called wet area maps, and you'll see some maps of those too, to investigate the surface flows in the watershed. So there's a lot, there's a lot of text here, I know. But, so with regards to climate change, you're looking at days above 30 degrees, the daily maximum, that's going to increase to about seven, which is a change of, you know, up from three days since 1990. Now, that doesn't seem too bad, but then the high twenties, low thirties, where you have above 25 degrees as your daily maximum, that's going to increase to about 33 days. And that's a jump of 15 days since 1990. And then the average summer temperatures are going to go to 15 degrees, which is a change of two degrees since 1990. So, and that data is from Uranus and Dr. Charles Bork. And that was, that modeling was actually done in the fifth assessment report. So if they were to run this again with the most recent ones, I wouldn't be shocked if there was a slight increase. But regionally, there may not be a significant increase. It's hard to say, but those are the most updated numbers, updated numbers we have. And then precipitation, so the annual watershed balance, at least in the summer, it's actually going to increase because you're going to see an increase in total precipitation. But those events are going to become more sparse and they're going to become more intense. So you will have more stress with drier periods, but you will also have more stress with intense rainfall. And then Hurricane Dorian, so throughout this project, I use Hurricane Dorian as kind of like my benchmark storm because it's recent. It did hit Nova Scotia harder than it hit us though, but in any case, you can expect a Dorian about once every 50 years, including with climate change factored in. And historically, based on what I know, Dorian was more of like a 75 to 100-year thing at, you know, its peak damage. So you're going to see storms like that happening a bit more often. And this is an example of the IDF curves that we produce. And you can see I have an asterisk there where Dorian is. So on the X-axis, you have time, the Y-axis is total precipitation. And the different lines there are the different return periods. So a 10-year event happens once in every 10 years. A 50-year event happens once every 50 years. And so those rarer events are more intense. And there's, there's a bunch of those in the report. And that is, I believe, included on the agenda. So moving on to surface flow, so that was climate change. It's a lot, you know, I wish I could go deeper into it. But really, the thing that I wanted to focus on is what we found with surface flow, and especially looking at the beaver lodges. So there's that old train bed by Gibson Lake, and we know that that's been affected by beaver activity. We know that there's a collapsed culvert there. And I was talking to Jason Bauer from DELG, so he was my main contact from the province for this project. And he said that he suspected more beaver activity kind of downstream from that train bed. And so we did fly the drone over there and we did find what I suspect is a beaver lodge. And so I'll show you pictures of that as well. And then the culvert is still collapsed, it's still a choke point. And then the wet area maps, so they're good for finding where water is going to pool, where it's going to flow during those intense rainfall events. So they may be able to help you find like those intermittent flows that may not be marked on, you know, topographic map, they may not be accounted for. So this is an example of the wet area map here, and there's the old train bed. And so I'm just showing you this map so that you kind of have some location context for the photos that I'm about to show you. So we parked the truck here on Fry Road. And when we flew the drone, we were kind of looking out into this direction here. And this is a 3D view map of it. And again, all the wet area maps are there. And we have that for all of, all the St. John watershed and all of the West Bondi composite watersheds, including Shamcook. So this is the drone footage. So these two beaver lodges that are marked, they were already known, those are the Conical Beaver Lodges there with some up close shots. And the culvert is over there as well, so we got an up close shot of that. So we already knew that those lodges were there. And then this is what I suspect to be a third one. I zoomed in as much as I could with the photos that we got from the drone. And so to me, this does support the suspicion that there is beaver activity up there. And it might be worth it to, you know, not necessarily by ECW, although we could, but somebody, I think, should fly a drone in that area to look out for more lodges. And this is the culvert as of November 2021. Jason has some photos on foot of the culvert from various angles, and this is what it looks like from an overhead view. And the other area that we wanted to check out was Greenlaws Brook. There was some questions about, you know, is it an inflow? There's something with the water levels. We didn't get to get the drone out in that area before everything flows over. So we do have a wet area map. I clipped it to the watershed boundary, but we do have data outside of the watershed boundary as well. And then cyanobacteria, I mean, they weren't a major part of this project, but I thought they were an honorable mention because they will be affected by climate change on both the increased temperatures and the changes in precipitation patterns. And I was talking to Brian Gleave about it too. He actually gave me that photo. So just to kind of refresh, I mean, most of you probably know all of this already, but the main species of concern is this Cleotrichia echinolata. I hope I pronounced that right. But it hangs out in the sediment and it stores nutrients there. So that's how it's able to succeed in an oligotrophic lake like Shamcook. So climate change is going to increase light availability as the ice-free days increase, again, increased heat. And those dry periods can all contribute to an increased likelihood of problematic blooms. And the characteristics of these species make it kind of hard to difficult, or make it hard to predict the exact timing of the blooms. But based on what I know, just as a rough estimate, I would think that like mid to late August is probably going to be the most likely problematic period. But that's just a rough estimate. So the conclusions, the main conclusions that we got from this are that the net water balance is going to increase slightly, but it's the extremes and the hot and the intense rainfall periods that are going to become more of a problem. So climate change is not going to necessarily introduce any new threats in terms of watershed balance, but it will intensify the existing ones. So I guess it's kind of a silver lining. And yeah, our drone footage supports that there may be more beaver lodges. And even though it's imperfect, from what I've seen, the knowledge of surface flows in the watershed is improving. And it's not just us, it's, you know, the Atlantic Salmon Federation, volunteers, local government, the province, everybody's working together to fill in those knowledge gaps. So that's good, and we're making progress on that. And, yeah, so, and this will be more interesting when the province is down there part of it. But yeah, so that's what I can say from ECW, and that's, that's what I have for you. So I will stop sharing my screen here. But does anybody have any questions around all of that?
Yeah, thank you very much for that quick presentation. We do have in-
We do have in this council package, the full report, so appreciate that. I have a quick question, and I'll pass it over to members of council. So obviously, low flow conditions, it says, tend to favor the bacteria growth at the lake. And then when you go into the actual kind of descriptions of each lake, it says that the westward outflow that drains past the old train bed and into Little Shamcook Lake, that the outflow has been bottlenecked by collapsed culvert and beaver lodges like you, like you spoke of. And in fact, it even says that in September of 2020, DELG actually documented that there was no measurable flow. So my question is, we know we have a challenge with bacteria in the, in the, in the lake. Are these beaver dams a major contributor to this, to this challenge that we're having? Again, I know there's other factors that you spoke of, but how, how likely is it that these beaver dams are magnifying the problem even worse?
It's, it's still hard to say, partly because we don't know the extent of, of the beaver dams and of their effect. I wouldn't be the best person to ask that because I'm not a hydrologist, I'm, I'm coming at you from the data analyst side. That would be a question for Jason. I think the main thing with Gibson Lake is the collapsed culvert in that area specifically, that old train bed, I think that's the main problem. But when you're talking about like the Limeburner Lake area, there may be some unaccounted beaver activity there. So even within the watershed, the effect of different factors is going to be variable.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a set environment where you can measure one specific thing, but it, the report did actually allude, and I remember about 25 years ago, I was skinny and had a full head of hair, but I hiked off, actually, what is it, what's called Snowshoe Lake, and we found beaver dams up there and took pictures of it. And the town back then actually needed them because I believe the lake levels were lower, and it was because it was dammed up so much. So it's not the first time the town has had to look at beaver dams, and of course, the, our LSD friends had to look at beaver dams and find out the impacts of it. So I'll open it up to other council, but I'm interested to know with this report what the next steps are, right? Is, is it just, this is the information, or are these beaver dams a conversation that we should be having, for example? I don't know, Mr. Knopper, Mr. Spear, if you could answer that one?
I think the next step is to discuss this with the Department of Environment and Local Government. As you say, the past few summers have been wet enough that we haven't had concerns, but as the lake levels drop, it drops significantly is when the cyanobacteria becomes a problem, stirs up the bottom and stuff. And so anything that's a choke point further upstream is a concern. I don't know what their policy is on relocating beavers. I'm sure, hopefully it's not the same as deer. Don't have to say the same thing. So I think there's going to be a discussion. This is being submitted to the department as part of the Environmental Trust Fund. And maybe Penny can, or Lisa, can line us up with who's the right person up there that talks about hydrology, because they certainly, certainly understand up there that it's our only water supply, and if something happens there, we're going to have a lot of challenges. And so I think it's maybe to work with the department and maybe have them come down at some point in the spring and, and maybe instead of us going at it alone, try to involve them in bigger discussions.
Perfect. Any other member of council, any questions?
Counselor Blanchard.
Yeah, thank you, worship. Thank you for the presentation, Lee. I don't know if you'd be the one to answer this question or not. You did talk about in your presentation, some data gaps, and also in your full report, you noted specifically around groundwater and recharge rates. There's sort of a lack of, of solid information to really draw any, any, any real conclusions. I'm wondering, do you know if the provincial plan, the Shamcook Improvement Project, is looking at recharge rates, groundwater, and those types of things to sort of fill in some of the gaps? I know we've had some questions come to this council previously about plans to drill wells into the groundwater in and around Shamcook Lake. And, and certainly, you know, your comments about, about climate change and about the overall water, or the overall rates, I guess, the water level rather, sort of increasing slightly, but it is going to be periodic. It's not going to be sustained throughout the year, it's going to be periods of time. So in general, yes, overall, things may increase, but at certain periods in the summer, we could be experiencing significant, you know, decreases in water level and things like that, and, you know, specifically, and the impacts that that might have around cyanobacteria, things along, along those lines. But specifically around groundwater, do you, do you know if there's any work that the province is undertaking to sort of fill in the gaps around how that water, how those, how that area is being recharged through the groundwater system?
So with the Shamcook Improvement Project, I don't believe they are doing like a full-scale kind of SWAT model on it with the like fancy computerized, you know, stuff. If they are looking at groundwater, I think it would be just for some of the specific proposals for development that are going on, like you mentioned, and that's my understanding of it. But I really think I need to reach out to Jason again, and I might CC Mr. Knopper and Mr. Spear on it as well. Just to ask Jason what the timeline is on the development, or on the Department of Local, on the department's project, ask him what the timeline is on it, when they expect to have a final report, because at ECW, we're going to want to know that information as well. And then once their information and our information is together on the table, then those next steps, I think, will be much clearer.
Thank you. Any other member of council? Counselor Heenan.
Yes, your worship and council. I really wish I was an engineer at this point, but I really worry, one event can force the whole system to have a problem. And I see the one event as being the collapsed, collapsed culvert issue that seems to be predominant in here. And I may or may not be correct when I say that if flow is interrupted, then we will have more bacteria. So my big thing is to make sure that the flow continues and that it, it's able to keep it stirred up, shall I say, for lack of a better word. So my concern is this collapsed culvert and perhaps the beaver dams.
Perfect.
Yeah, thank you, worship and council.
Any other member of council? We're just making sure we're good there. Well, thank you very much for the presentation, and it sounds like there'll be some follow-up regarding this report, some more to come before the public and council. But the more we know, the better we can, you know, manage and help manage with our neighboring LSDs, the, the asset that it is that is so critical to our community. So again, thank you for the time tonight. We're now jumping into motion, so the first one actually is going to be to Deputy Mayor Akaji. Oh, sorry, I got ahead of myself, I apologize. I almost forgot the showstop, Mr. Spear with his report, yes. Sorry about that, I was excited with the jumping around, got ahead, the floor is yours, then we'll go back to you, Deputy Mayor Akaji, my apologies.
It's okay, I was excited, too, when you jumped over me, your worship, so there's two of us. With the advent of May and the beginning of more outdoor activities, there is a hope and a sense of renewal in the air. On behalf of the staff, I wish to thank you for the continued opportunity to report on the ongoing fairs of the Town of St. Andrews. From council, over the last few weeks, council has awarded three contracts for various infrastructure projects this spring. With total construction value close to $2 million, it is one of the busiest seasons we've had in a few years. The same contractor, Fairville Construction, was the lowest bidder on all projects. They have done other projects for us over the years, are well established, and have a proven track record to be efficient in their work. They are scheduled to start in early May and will continue through late June, early July until all the projects are completed. Most of the work is outside high-traffic areas and should not interfere with visitors to the town. However, there will be some inconvenience to local homeowners as their infrastructure is replaced on their blocks. The One Way Water Street Initiative was approved again for the summer by council from Edward to Frederick Streets. Over the winter, we conducted a survey with residents on your perception of traffic last year. The overwhelming response was with the return of parking on Water Street and the nautical-themed barricades with the one-way street highly supported. Another initiative coming from the survey is that four 30-minute parking slots near the corner of King and Water Streets will be signed and enforced this summer. With the evolution of active transportation, council is reviewing whether to repeal the bylaw that bans the use of skateboard, scooters, and inline skates in the historical business district. There have been a lot of debates over this issue over the last few years, with those in favor of continuing the ban, citing safety on congested sidewalks and doors that open right into pedestrian traffic as key reasons to maintain the bylaw. However, in an age where we want to use, or sorry, want to see the use of fewer cars, allowing as many alternatives for self-transportation is a strong argument as well. Under administration, with the addition of new accounting staff this spring, the water bills have been slower getting out. They should have been either released today, they were Friday, I guess, or in the next couple of days to our residents. We thank you for your patience. In addition to that, the town newsletter will also be included in the envelope. For those that do not get a water bill, copies are available online or at the town office. The Environment Advisory Committee has put out a newsletter highlighting several individual initiatives a person can take to help improve the overall health of our environment. There has been a lot of thought and discussion put into this, so I wish to thank the committee and Paul Knopper for seeing this through to completion. I would encourage everyone to read it, and once completed, please ensure to dispose of it in your recycling containers, if not keeping it as a reference document. After putting out two requests for proposals and dealing one on one with a proponent, we were unable to find an operator or make a business case to run a fitness facility at the arena. For now, it is being used as a long-deated council chambers. However, we have not made any permanent changes, and if a better use is identified, we will easily be able to revert the space back to its original use. As discussed last month, the cost of the originally planned wharf refurbishment has increased quite dramatically. Council has asked staff to go back and discuss with the engineer alternative plans to ensure that the facility is maintained and kept within the $5.5 million budget. We are looking at various alternatives, and we'll be in discussions with the funding partners about some of the challenges we are facing. We are happy to announce that because of a grant given by Celebrate Canada, we are going to offer an appropriate celebration of National Aboriginal Day on June 21st. We are grateful for the participation of the Basque Mahotti people and Deputy Mayor Akaji for their assistance in marking this day appropriately. I would encourage as many residents as possible to join us for the event, which will be announced over the next few weeks. I wish to acknowledge the students of both Sir James Den Academy, the New Brunswick Community College, and the Fundy Sea Cadets who observed Earth Day by participating in cleanups of spaces within the town. Not only is it appreciated by all those in the town, but is also an excellent opportunity to give, to give back to your community and hopefully develop a lifelong desire for a clean environment. Services, a sure sign of summer is the seven-day-a-week opening of the public washrooms, which started today. We have been noticing the gradual increase of visitors to the town on weekends and throughout the week. We have placed all the picnic tables, garbage cans, and benches to enhance their experience. Public Works is trying out a new supplier of cold mixed asphalt. It is supposed to bind better to the existing pavement and be more resistant to being torn up by traffic. They were able to start earlier in the year by putting cold mix down on deep potholes, so we'll see soon if it lives up to its reputation. In April, there was a vital component of the holder sidewalk machine that needed to be repaired. Luckily, it was after snowfall events, so staff took time to do a major overhaul of the whole unit. Although the repair cost was higher than anticipated, we have now added more years of life to it by tightening and replacing smaller components that normally would not have been seen. This is a vital piece of equipment for our winter storm removal and is needed to maintain that level of service that the council and residents have come to expect. As most of you have noticed by now, the Leaf Bay Collection Program is well underway. They make rounds two or three days a week, so do not be surprised if it takes a couple of days for them to be picked up from your yard. Staff also prepared the room at the arena for the current council chambers. Please note the summer student positions have been posted over the last few weeks, and like many other organizations, we've been seeing fewer applications. If you know of anyone who will be interested or would like more information, please look on our website or contact the town hall. After restricted access due to the pandemic, the Community Youth Activities Center is now running several programs to entertain and educate youth. In a partnership with the Big Brothers Big Sisters, they have been down to offer various programs two nights a week. We wish to thank them for their involvement down here. Staff and members started the gardening season in the greenhouse, so by the time the weather warms up enough, the plants will have had a good start for the vegetables. We hope to be ready for harvest by late summer, early fall. In conjunction with the local Dragon Boat Paddlers Club, the youth center has put together a team to compete this summer. It is an excellent team-building activity as well as increasing the fitness level of the participants. They may be doing fundraisers to acquire $1,800 in competition fees, so stay tuned for that. I would also like to acknowledge the volunteers of the Ross Memorial Library who came in and ran a volunteer tax clinic for those of humble means and with relatively simple returns. For local governments reform, the representatives of the Bayside LSD, Shamcook LSD, and the Town of St. Andrews have been working cooperatively through, through the process of local governance reform under the advisement of our facilitator, Dawn Fitzgerald. We have established a new website, standrews.support, to provide up-to-date information on our process of local governance reform, including frequently asked questions, news, updates, and maps outlining the community and the new election wards. We look forward to continuing this process jointly as we build our new community together. In conclusion, a key theme I write about in the newsletter is the various transitions we will see in 2022. I am not an advocate of change for the sake of change, but as I witness all the challenges and opportunities facing everyone, I realize that it is inevitable. The best way to manage it is to plan and keep ahead of it. Over the next few years, your mayor and council will be making many decisions that will affect your community, and always appreciate respectful and well-articulated feedback from our residents as we face this together. Respectfully submitted, Chris Spears, CEO, Treasurer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spear, greatly appreciate it. Any questions on any of the staff reports or anything Mr. Spear highlighted? Seeing nothing, just double checking online. All look for a motion to approve the staff reports. That Counselor Hurdle, seconded by Counselor Heenan, at this point, all in favor of approving the, the motion, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody, so the staff reports have been accepted. So now we will get into the introduction consideration and passing of bylaws and motions, and Deputy Mayor Akaji, the floor is yours.
Thank you, your worship and council. My first one is FA2203307. And it's the bylaw number 22-02, a bylaw to regulate the code of conduct of the council of the Town of St. Andrews, and this is the third and final reading. A code of conduct bylaw establishes expectations for how council members should conduct themselves while carrying out their responsibilities and in their work as a collective decision-making body for the community. Changes to the code of conduct include statement of values and principles, enhanced behaviors of council, respect for decision-making and adherence to policies and procedures, enhanced use of communication tools and social media, conflict of interest and confidential information, compliance with the bylaw and corrective actions. And this is in the background, sorry. First reading was on March 21st, 2022. The second reading on April the 4th, 2022. No public hearing of objection is needed, as this is a bylaw to regulate council actions. So the third reading by title can occur as posting, posting process, processes were followed under the Local Governance Act. So the action is this. That council grants leave for the third and final reading to bylaw number 2202-02, a bylaw to regulate the code of conduct of the council of the Town of St. Andrews. And I so move this, your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Seconded, please, for that motion, Counselor Hurdle. And at this point, we'll open up for any debate or conversation. Seeing none, so I will call the question. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Perfect. I will go to third reading then. So this is bylaw number 22-02, a bylaw to regulate the code of conduct of the council in the Town of St. Andrews. I'll read it by title. Number one is short title, two is purpose and application, three is definitions, four is statutory framework and interpretation, five is statement of the values and principles of members, six is council responsibilities, seven is behavior or members of council, eight is respect for decision-making process, nine is adherence to policies, procedures, and bylaws, 10 is orientation and training attendance, 11 is conduct respecting administration, 12 is gifts and benefits, 13 is the use of local government property, resources, and services by members of council. by members of council, 14 is election campaign, 15 is use of communication tools and social media, 16 is confidential information, 17 is conflict of interest, 18 is government relationships, 19 is business relationships, 20 is improper use of influence, 21 is compliance with this bylaw, 22 is repeal and effective date. And it has now been read a third time the second day of May 2022. So kudos to council for not just looking at some of the acts that are out there by the province, but actually holding yourself to a level that's more accountable. So that is definitely good to see. So we'll move on to the next one. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Worship. My second one is F.A. 220505.
Sorry.
Sorry, yeah. Point of order, where do I go?
Outside, down the hall.
Outside?
Get out of here.
Don't enjoy the sound.
Go away.
Give just a moment.
Pug your ears. Sorry.
It's a lot easier on Zoom, isn't it?
I'm sorry.
All right.
So F.A. 220505. And it's check signing authority. So the background is this: The current signing authority with the Bank of Nova Scotia is the mayor or the deputy mayor and CAO/Treasurer or Assistant Treasurer. With the newly filled Assistant Treasurer position, this position needs to be added as a signing authority for the town. It is staff's recommendation to appoint Andrew Lord, Assistant Treasurer, as the second signing officer for staff for the Town of St. Andrews. And the action, the motion is this: Be it resolved that accounts in the name of the Town of St. Andrews herein after called "the corporation" be kept at the Bank of Nova Scotia, herein after called "the bank," and the mayor or deputy mayor, together with the CAO/Treasurer or Assistant Treasurer, are hereby authorized for and in the name of the corporation to sign, make, draw, accept, endorse, and deliver checks, promissory notes, bills of exchange, orders for payment of money, and such agreements and instruments as may be necessary for use in connection with the operation of the said accounts. That any one, any one of the above-mentioned officers is hereby authorized for and in the name of the corporation to endorse and transfer to the bank for deposit or discount with, with, or collection by the bank but for the, but for credit of the corporation ... Sorry? Corporate? Only checks, promissory notes, bills of exchange, orders for payment of money and other instruments, to arrange, settle, balance, and certify all books and accounts with the bank, and to sign receipts and vouchers. That a signature card for all accounts of the corporation shall be signed by the above-mentioned officers, filled with the bank, and shall be in the following form: Brad Henderson, Mayor, or Kate Catherine Akeji, Deputy Mayor, and Chris Spear, CAO/Treasurer, or Andrew Lord, Assistant Treasurer. And I so move this, Your Worship.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Akeji. A seconder for that motion is Counselor Blanchard. Any discussion? Deputy Mayor Akeji.
I just wondered when I was reading this, it says that any one, isn't it two?
One of each of the categories, so yourself or I or Chris or Andrew would have to, yeah. You and I, you and I can't sign, right? Can, can?
No, just one of us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
Sorry.
Anyone else? Okay. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that is everybody that has been carried, so we'll give Counselor Hurdle a moment to come back in.
Did you wave me?
And then it will be over to you, Counselor Blanchard, once he's, once he's there.
Thank you, Your Worship. Give him a chance to sit down. Shame on you. So, reference number PW220505. Subject is Tree Planting Initiative for 2022. So as part of the Earth Day and Queen's Platinum Jubilee celebrations, and supporting the declaration of climate, of the climate change emergency, council has directed staff to install 70 trees in the community. 10 of the trees were planted in the fall of 2021 with the support of Mrs. Flemer of Kingsbury Garden. The town is looking at installing an additional 60 trees to complete the 70 new trees in one year. Please see the attached staff report for additional details. As tree planting is an unbudgeted fund for 2022, council will have to identify funds for staff to use to acquire the trees. Staff would recommend using funds from the Tourism Accommodation Levy and the Tree Planting Reserve Fund for up to $12,000 to purchase and plant trees in the community. So the motion is that council directs staff to use up to $12,000 in funding from the Tourism Accommodation Levy Fund and the Tree Planting Reserve Fund to purchase and plant 60 new trees in the community for 2022, and I so move.
A seconder for that motion is Deputy Mayor Akeji. We'll open this one up for discussion. Counselor Hurdle.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think this is a great idea. The only, the only concern, well, concern's a strong word that I have, would be utilizing the Tourism Accommodation Levy as part of the budget for this. I just don't feel necessarily that it's maybe in the spirit of Taub to be, for tree planting, not anything against the issue itself. I'm curious if we could possibly open this up to the public and maybe get them involved at the same time by, by offering dedication trees, possibly some way that they could help, help fund this without, without dipping into Taub. But just leave that open for the council.
Hey, you're, you're almost promoting a sponsor tree program where people can stop by and...
Right.
That's a great idea. I do take your, your point on that for sure. I had your concerns. We've had previous ones that we've kind of wondered if it fit the spirit as well. Deputy Mayor Akeji.
I forget. I know that the Legion had done this in previous years, that you could do it for a Legion member, so, you know, it may be something that they can look into as well. Thank you.
Perfect. Counselor Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just where this, where this does actually say that we're splitting or we're drawing funds from two different funds, do we know what percentage from each we're talking about here?
I believe it was 3,500 from the Tree Reserve Fund, so the rest would be potentially the Tourism Accommodation Levy. I, I don't know if it makes sense just not to, to hold the meeting up, but maybe just remove the Tourism Accommodation Levy, and then I can meet with Mr. Spear and Mr. Knopper, and we can follow back up with you after on what budget it is. I don't think we need to necessarily get into the weeds of that. We want to do it, and we just got to figure out, we might circle back, and we may have to, but we'll have that debate at that particular time. Is that okay, Mr. Spear, to do it that way? Ideally, you'd like to know what fund, but just not to hold the process up because it was hopefully done for the Queen's Jubilee, which is not that far away.
That's up to you, Your Worship. I mean, we could always create a deficit, knowing, you know, carrying it forward because it's unbudgeted, or there's other ways to manage if you didn't want to take it out of that fund. The one thing about the dedication trees that could be a little bit problematic is to find 70, for the presentation trees, people want them in fairly high-traffic areas. To find room for 60 more trees, not every one of them is going to be in a high-traffic area, so they're going to be planted in various locations all through the town. And so I don't think, I think it's a good idea, but there'd have to be a limit we'd have to identify, because we've had some people recently ask about the memorial trees, and it's getting harder and harder to find, you know, spaces beside sidewalks that aren't over pipes in the ground or power lines overhead. So I appreciate the context, it's just it's finding a spot where people will be okay with it, it's becoming a bit a problem the last few years.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Spear. Counselor Heenan.
Yes, Your Worship and Council. I believe we have time as of essence here, so we don't, we can't hold the project up. It's the funding that could be the problem. I totally agree, of course, with Counselor Hurdle on the Accommodation Levy Fund. I find that's kind of something we're jumping to every now and then for different things that I don't see falling under that. I wouldn't mind a certain amount, like $2,000 from it or something, but to fund 65% from that would be quite a large amount. But as I say, we can't stop it because we need to do this.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Heenan. So what I would look for at this point is for someone to propose an amendment and just leave the funding sources out of the motion. So I'll throw it out and see if there's a mover for the amendment. The council directs staff to use up to $12,000 in funding to purchase and plant 60 new trees in the community for 2022. Would anyone like to move on that amendment? I've got Counselor Heenan seconded by Deputy Mayor Akeji. Any discussion on that amendment? Okay. Call the question. All in favor of that amendment, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody, and now we will go to approve the motion. All look for a mover on it now at this point, since it's been a minute. Counselor Hurdle, and seconded by Counselor Blanchard. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. And that has been carried, and Mr. Spear, Mr. Knopper will follow back up and come up with a plan of attack and make council aware on that one. And I believe that was it for Counselor Blanchard this evening for motions, if I'm not mistaken. It was, so we're going right over now to Counselor Gomishel.
Thank you, Your Worship. The next one is reference number PED220303, submitted by myself, and the subject is Bylaw Number 22-03, a Bylaw to Repeal Bylaw Number 01-5, a Bylaw to Regulate the Use of Skateboards, Scooters, and Inline Skates Within the Town of St. Andrews, First Reading. And the background, Your Worship reads: At the regular council meeting on Tuesday, April 19th, 2022, council discussed Bylaw 01-5, a Bylaw Regulating the Use of Skateboards, Scooters, and Inline Skates Within the Town of St. Andrews. Council discussed topics of safety for pedestrians and users, youth and adults, active transportation, and liability regarding the uses of these forms of transportation along Water Street. Upon council consensus, staff was directed to bring forward Bylaw 22-03, a Bylaw to Repeal Bylaw 01-5, for further debate by council. And the action for this motion, Your Worship, reads: That council grant leave for first reading of Bylaw Number 22-03, a Bylaw to Repeal Bylaw Number 01-5, a Bylaw to Regulate the Use of Skateboards, Scooters, and Inline Skates Within the Town of St. Andrews. And I make that motion, Your Worship.
Thank you very much, Counselor Gomishel. Could I have a seconder for that motion? I've got Counselor Blanchard. We'll now open up for discussion. Keep in mind, council, we have debated this, I believe, twice already. If you have something new to contribute, by all means, I'd encourage it. But with that being said, if it does go to first reading, obviously we'll have a hearing of objections, you'll hear from the public as well. So it isn't repealed, obviously, as we know, by just going to the first reading. It takes three readings and a hearing of objections. So just for the public to be aware that's watching. Counselor Hurdle.
Thank you, Your Worship. Obviously, I think that this is, this is a good idea to repeal this. However, I think that we can all admit we've heard considerable concern from the community, based primarily around fear of injury in the community as well, and so I just want to, I want to address that. I personally don't believe that there is anything to fear by repealing this bylaw. However, I also think I need to recognize that the way you get used, somebody used to, you know, being afraid of the dark is not by locking them in a room and turning the lights off. You have to kind of gradually acclimatize someone to it. So I have a proposal to make in this circumstance, which is possibly, since we're looking at doing this really quickly, is maybe pausing and allowing skateboarding, inline skating, and scooters in the shoulder over the winter season, so say October to May. And if there are no issues, if there are no injuries, if there are no accidents in that time period, then we bring this motion forward to discuss next May. I just want to, you know, make sure that we're doing our due diligence. Again, I don't think that there is anything to fear in this circumstance, but I want to make sure that I'm, you know, that I'm hearing the concerns that are coming from the community.
All right. So thank you for that comment, Counselor Hurdle. So just to be clear, what you're proposing is that we table the reading tonight, and what we do is we come back in two weeks' time, because that's how often we meet, with amendment to the current bylaw. So we're not repealing it, we would amend the current bylaw and add in the periodical, I guess you could say, ban on it during the peak summer months.
Correct. If there's an appetite on council for that, absolutely.
Okay. So safe to say a motion to table at this point, so is there a seconder for that particular line? I've got Deputy Mayor Akeji also seconding that, so we will open up discussion on the tabling of this before we vote. Anyone want to add anything on that one? Counselor Blanchard.
Just a question, Your Worship. So again, I recognize what Counselor Hurdle has said, in that we have heard from the public, some for, some against, we should mention that as well. But, but the idea or the, the suggestion that, that there's an increased risk of injury, things of that nature, I'm just curious to know, prior to this being implemented initially, were there issues, cases of injury that the town is aware of, just from my own personal reference? I'm just trying to, I, I understand, you know, sort of the discussions that, that occurred previously, but I'm trying to find out if, if there were actually reported incidents where, where we had injuries, vandalism associated, you know, not intentional vandalism, but, but damage associated with skateboarding in, in the downtown core.
So there's been no one currently on town staff that was around when that was originally brought in? There's no documented injuries? There was reports of some collisions. I can't really comment on how often, who, what happened. But we also met with a retired member of the RCMP that was in the community, and they alluded to the fact that it was a challenge, and the bylaw actually gave them the ability to minimize. Without this bylaw, there's nothing stopping them from whizzing up and down the streets and on the curbs, right? So that's, that, that was the gist. Is that, anything you want to add to that, Mr. Spear?
Yeah. One thing, Your Worship, that member of the retired RCMP actually submitted a letter, you might have not noticed, in your email today. So you can take that, and he would probably, because he had to enforce it at the time. Again, this has been in place for, since I've been here, and I've been here for 17 years. So, you know, it's before anybody's time to accept his, to really comment on it, but I think to take that to heart. The one thing, too, Your Worship, is instead of tabling it, I guess, if it's really a motion to amend the time period, that'd probably be a better avenue to go, unless you just want to take another couple of weeks to think about it. So I'm not exactly sure. Tabling it would just mean we have to bring back the current bylaw as it is for a motion to amend. So do you want to discuss the amendment tonight, or you just want to take a couple of weeks for council to think about it, and then revisit it in two weeks?
If council decides to table it, I think it'd be good to have it on paper, just so everybody could see it, because right now we'd be kind of flying off. I could add in a date at the end of it, but I feel like for the sake of two weeks, I think we should, because we meet so often, and we can do second and third reading at the same time. I really don't see why, again, I can for sure amend that now, but I guess the advantage of doing that is the hearing of objections could be set now based on that amendment, right? Is that safe to say?
Your Worship, you can set the hearing of objections for whichever day possible. So if you want to take extra time to review and come back.
Okay.
It's just adjustment of the, of the date of when you enforce the law.
Perfect. I'm, I'm good to council's pleasure on that one, whatever they prefer. So we do have a mover and a seconder on, on tabling this, and then we would come back with the amended version of this bylaw, if that does carry. Is there any more questions or conversation on that particular? Counselor Heenan.
Well, it's, how do I put this? It's, I guess, because I'm in the middle of being senior and being of a younger group that bothers me. I see council wanting to have landmark sayings. I don't want to be part of a landmark that someone gets killed, and I would not support it no matter what. And I make it publicly known that I feel that if they want to bring their skateboards, they can come downtown and skateboard till they get to Water Street and then carry them. I, I just don't want to be part of a council that has a death on its shoulders because we amended a bylaw that has been in place for 17 years. And so I'm making it publicly known that I will not and am not going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Heenan. Anyone else on this one? Deputy Mayor Akeji.
I'm not against skateboarders, and I don't see very many inline skaters, but I certainly have heard from a lot of people, and I'm not saying just seniors, but a lot of younger and older people, and I have, and I thank Mr. Spear for not saying I'm one of the ancient ones that have been on council, but I was here, and I even had some previous counselors that said, you know, we debated this and debated this. And I did talk to some shop owners as well, because I was downtown, and they were upset that, you know, we're wasting our time, as they said, on this. The bylaw is there to protect our people, and whether you're older or senior. And then I, I want to thank staff very much for all the information that you gave us, especially those red bricks that are downtown. They're great, maybe, to skateboard on, I have no idea, but I know that they are dangerous just for walkers, let alone runners or skateboarders. And, you know, unless we can give the RCMP the right to, to talk to these skateboarders if they're doing something that is not lawful, then we are holding them up, and they won't do anything, and then we are looking at somebody getting injured. And I know I've had seniors say to me that they're just not going to go downtown if this should pass, except for peak, you know, early morning periods or whatever, when they think it would be safe for them. So I won't be voting, when we do vote, to amend this bylaw. I think it should be, but I do like Council Hurdle's idea of both the shoulder season. But to walk four blocks, they are still getting their active participation and four blocks isn't a lot of distance for them to carry their skateboard, just to be a little safer on their two feet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I guess before we go to vote, unless there's someone else that wants to, another option, I don't know, I don't scooter and I don't skateboard, but is it an opportunity that they can skateboard downtown and scooter downtown and all that stuff, but they just don't go on the sidewalk? It's one way, they could go right along the side of the road and get to where they want to get and people on the road, you're not going to get hit going to go to the bank. Is that another way of looking at another solution? Because I do appreciate the spirit, you're trying to do a test before you make a big change when the sidewalks are busiest, but if I'm rollerblading, for example, do they still call it rollerblading kids? I don't know.
Inline skating.
Inline skating? Shows how old I am, I picture the big plastic boots. Anyway, if you look at the shoulder season, it's when they can't use them because it's slippery, there's ice. Like they actually, when they can use it, in those months that we'd actually be prohibiting it. So I almost wonder of allowing them to go, especially the fact that we've made it wider, allowing them, because the skateboard speeds downtown are just as quick as cars sometimes, I've seen them go. I'm wondering if that's not a compromise to meet everybody on council and we can all get behind and then try that and then if there's no issues, maybe you look to look at the sidewalks in the future. I think the concern would be from the business community, is somebody doing, is grinding, is that a term then? Am I nailing that one at least? Grinding rails in front of their business all day while they're waiting for customers to go in. I just, I see both sides of this. I feel like I'm probably going to hit the middle of it by the way things are going right now, but I'm just wondering, is that a compromise? I'd like to hear some of council's thoughts on that, on both sides of this, some of your ideas on that. Council Heenan?
Your worship, if it's on the street, I'm fine because scooters are allowed on the street. I took the safety course, they're allowed on the street. I don't see why inline skating can't be on the street. It's the sidewalks I oppose to because they would have to, they would have to abide by crosswalks, they would have to abide by the same rules as cars and traffic. So I wouldn't be as opposed to it being on the street, but it's the sidewalk that I'm opposed to.
Okay.
Thank you, your worship.
Anyone that was obviously hoping to repeal this bylaw, want to weigh in on that prospective idea and solution to, to make change, but again, it's just, it's just a proposal. If we want to put it on, that's other thing, but any other comments on that? Because I want to give staff direction, are we doing shoulder seasons? Are we doing it on the street? We need to get some consensus here. Are you checking something out, Mr. Spear?
Well, yeah. I'll have to, we'll take direction of staff, but we'll have to consult the RCMP and lawyers to make sure. I can see a potential problem of putting pedestrian versus car, rather of two pedestrians or, you know, skateboarder running into a pedestrian and into a moving vehicle.
Okay.
But I have to make sure there's not a legality issue about pushing skateboarders. Scooters, I don't disagree with, but they're possibly treated like a bicycle, but skateboarders and inline skaters, there may be a provincial law that prohibits that. So we can still investigate it in both forefront, we'll let you know.
Okay. So if we do table, staff will come back with that and then we can actually come back with the preference between the two ideas. If we do table, if we don't table, what we're going to do, if that gets defeated, is I'm going to call the question to go to first reading. So one last, are there any new to add to this particular debate? Otherwise, I'll call the question. Okay. All in favor of tabling this motion, please signify by saying aye. Okay. That is four. And Council Neil, are you voting in favor of tabling this?
Sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't sure anybody could see me.
Are you in favor of tabling or are you hoping to, are you voting against this, just for the record, since I can see you? You're very small from here.
I just wanted to ask a couple of questions if I could.
I think we'll allow it just in the circumstance of Council Neil kind of being over there. You know, it's not obviously ideal when we go to the vote, but I think we should allow it, just to hear from all members of council equally. Go ahead, Council Neil.
Again, so one of my concerns is, well, one of my questions, I guess, right off the bat is, why were bicycles not included in this originally? I mean, I see just as many bicycles, young kids on bicycles that wouldn't be on the street going up the sidewalks. So I'm kind of curious just to know why bicycles were never included in it. The other question I had is, reading the bylaw as it's written right now, I'm not sure, like, my thought was actually that it made more sense to repeal this bylaw and even rewrite it if that was the case. Because right now, it doesn't differentiate between scooters. I heard Council Heenan say that scooters are allowed on the road. There are scooters that are allowed on the sidewalks as well. And I'm thinking of mobility scooters and there's no, you know, definition in here, there's no differentiating between them. It just simply states scooters and it's flat outright ban. So again, to me, it's, the wording of it's very ambiguous and it, it could definitely be tightened up. So honestly, my feeling was, I was leaning more towards repealing it and if we had a problem, to even rewrite it and reintroduce it. Thank you.
All right. So the only problem that we have with that challenge is if we repeal it before we have the new one in place, there's, there's no bylaw for those that are on that side of it. So my recommendation would be, are you allowed to repeal, go to motion and then also introduce the first reading of a new one at the same time? So basically, when you did your third reading, you'd repeal it and then you'd instantly put in the new one, is?
Technically, that'd be called an amendment.
So basically...
But we can figure out the logistics of it if you just let us know which direction you want to go with it.
So we could basically, I guess, to Council Neil's point, we don't have to repeal this, we just amend this to what we want it to say. Like that's, that's all, that would be the way to do it versus repeal it completely. So, okay. So what, I guess we'll go back to the original, and I guess the only thing that I'll add is answer a question, I could be wrong, but I think the perception is, is that bicycles can stop quicker than scooters, inline skates and skateboards. They have a braking mechanism. Not saying I came up with that idea, just being the messenger here, that is the perception. So we are still at the motion to table and if we table it, the expectation is staff is going to be working on a new bylaw from some of the feedback tonight and take it before you and then we can look at that and then amend it as required. So I'll go back to the question now at this point. All in favor of tabling this motion, please signify by saying aye. Okay. And those opposed to the tabling? So a vote of four to two. This has been tabled and staff and myself and of course, by all means, please provide feedback, will work on amending this version so council can consider that. I knew that was going to be the longest one of the evening, at least I assume it's the longest one of the evening, we're not through them now, so I appreciate Council Gomishel bringing that forward. At this point, we are going to switch over to planning and economic development with Council Heenan.
Thank you, your worship and council. My first one is PED 220303, amendment MP 20-05 to the municipal plan MP 20-01 for rezoning of 258 Montague Street, second and third reading. The town of St. Andrews has received a rezoning request with municipal plan amendment from 258 Montague Street from Mr. and Mrs. Faulkner Malay, owners of 258 Montague Street, the Montague Rose and Bed and Breakfast. PID is 01320894 is seeking a rezoning from service residential to tourist commercial zone to allow for a bracket tea room restaurant that is open to the general public in addition to the existing Bed and Breakfast. The Planning, Review and Adjustments Committee, PRC, provided a temporary use permit in May of 2021 for the owners to test the tea room concept. Public presentation happened on March 21st, 2022. The first reading was March 21st, 2022. Public hearing of objections was April 19th, 2022 and the views of the Planning Advisory Committee were received on April 20th, 2022. The PAC is in favor of rezoning of 258 Montague Street to tourist commercial. PAC further recommends that council give consideration to adopting the conditions suggested by the building inspector as means of maintaining the nature of the business as appropriate to the neighborhood. The action is the motion that council grants leave for second reading of amendment MP 20-05 to the town of St. Andrews Municipal Plan MP 2001 for Mr. and Mrs. Faulkner Malay, owners of 258 Montague Street. The Montague Bed, sorry, the Montague Rose Bed and Breakfast, PID number is 01320894, to move from residential designation to commercial designation to the generalized future land use map and ISO move.
Could I have a seconder for that motion? Deputy Mayor Akaji, discussion on that one? Council Hurdle?
Thank you, your worship. Have we had any feedback from the owners on the conditions?
Staff?
So, your worship, these were the conditions that were actually instilled, but they have the terms, the tender on use, they had no complaint or question with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll call the question. All those in favor of going to second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's everybody, that's been carried. This is bylaw number MP 20-05, a bylaw to amend bylaw number MP 20-01, being municipal plan bylaw for the town of St. Andrews, being enacted by the council of the town of St. Andrews as follows. One bylaw number MP 20-01, the municipal plan bylaw for the town of St. Andrews is amended by changing the designation as shown on the generalized future land use map attached to the said bylaw, Schedule A thereof, for the lands shown on Schedule 1, attached here too and forming part hereof, from residential designation to commercial designation, read the second time, or read the second time on the second day of May 2022. We'll go to the next motion.
Thank you, your worship. Motion that council grants leave for third and final reading of amendment MP 20-05 to the town of St. Andrews Municipal Plan MP 20-01 for Mr. and Mrs. Faulkner Malay, owners of 258 Montague Street, the Montague Rose Bed and Breakfast, PID number of 01320894, to move from residential designation to commercial designation to the generalized future land use map and ISO move that, your worship?
Seconder for that motion, Council Blanchard. Any discussion? Should be consistent with the previous one. Okay. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, your worship.
That is everybody, so we will go to third reading and sorry to repeat myself, but bylaw number MP 20-05, a bylaw to amend bylaw number MP 20-01, being municipal plan bylaw for the town of St. Andrews, being enacted by the council of the town of St. Andrews as follows. One bylaw number MP 20-01, the municipal plan bylaw for the town of St. Andrews is amended by changing the designation as shown on the generalized future land use map attached to the said bylaw, Schedule A thereof, the lands shown to Schedule 1, attached here too and forming part hereof, from residential designation to commercial designation, read the third time the second day of May 2022. I do think I read that one better. Next motion.
Thank you, your worship and council. It's PED 220304, amendment of Z 21-09 to zoning bylaw Z 21-01 for rezoning of 258 Montague Street, second and third reading. The town of St. Andrews has received a rezoning request from 258 Montague Street to move from service residential to tourist commercial. Mr. and Mrs. Faulkner Malay, owners of 258 Montague Street, the Montague Rose Bed and Breakfast, PID 01320894, is seeking a rezoning of, to allow for a tea room restaurant that is open to the general public in addition to existing Bed and Breakfast. A one-year temporary use permit was provided by the Planning Regional Adjustment Committee in May of 2021. This rezoning is coinciding with the amendment MP 20-05 to the municipal plan MP 20-01. Steps that need to be followed include first reading, March 21, 2022, public hearing of objections, April 19th, 2022, obtained views of PAC, April 20th, 2022. The PAC is in favor of rezoning of 258 Montague Street to tourist commercial. PAC further recommends that council gives consideration to adopting the conditions suggested by the building inspector as means of maintaining the nature of the business as appropriate to the neighborhood. And the motion, your worship, is that council grants leave for the first reading of amendment Z 21-09 to the town of St. Andrews zoning bylaw Z 21-01 for Mr. and Mrs. Faulkner Malay, owners of 258 Montague Street, the Montague Rose Bed and Breakfast, PID 01320894, to rezone from service residential to tourist commercial and ISO move, your worship?
Perfect. A friendly amendment on that one, it's actually the second reading, it was a typo, not your fault.
Okay.
So it is the second reading. So can I have a seconder for that then? Deputy Mayor Akaji, any discussion on, before I call the question? Okay. All in favor of going to second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is everybody, so here we go. This is bylaw number Z 21-09, a bylaw to amend bylaw number Z 21-01, being the zoning bylaw for the town of St. Andrews, being enacted by the council of the town of St. Andrews as follows. One bylaw number Z 21-01, the zoning bylaw for the town of St. Andrews is amended by changing the zone as shown on the zoning map attached to the said bylaw, Schedule A thereof, for the lands shown on Schedule 1, attached here too and forming part hereof, from service residential zone to tourist commercial zone, read the second time the second day of May 2022. Next motion.
Thank you, your worship and council. The motion is that council add the following terms and conditions to be implemented for Mr. and Mrs. Faulkner Malay, owners of 258 Montague Street, the Montague Rose Bed and Breakfast, PID 01320894. Number one, during the operation of the tea room, the front door of the building will remain open during such periods as weather allows. Two, tea room patrons are not to access the rest of the building save to use sanitary facilities. Reservations are required for the tea room service and services are to end at 7:00 PM. No more than 12 patrons who are not provided overnight occupation are permitted at any one service. Number five, no more than approximately one half of the tea room that's being, that being the room on the southeast corner of the main floor will be accessible to those who are not provided overnight accommodations and ISO move.
Thank you very much, a seconder for that motion. Council Hurdle, discussion? All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's everybody, we're now going to the next one.
Thank you, your worship. Motion that council grants leave for the third and final reading of the amendment of Z 21-09 to the town of St. Andrews zoning bylaw Z 21-01 for Mr. and Mrs. Faulkner Malay, owners of 258 Montague Street, the Montague Rose Bed and Breakfast, PID 01320894, to rezone from service residential to tourist commercial and ISO move.
Thank you, a seconder for that motion. Deputy Mayor Akaji, discussion on this last motion? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor of going to third reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is everybody, so here we go. Bylaw number Z 21-09, a bylaw to amend bylaw number Z 21-01, being the zoning bylaw for the town of St. Andrews, being enacted by the council of the town of St. Andrews as follows. One bylaw number Z 21-01, the zoning bylaw for the town of St. Andrews is amended by changing the zone as shown on the zoning map attached to the said bylaw, Schedule A thereof, for the lands shown on Schedule 1, attached here too and forming part of hereof, from service residential zone to tourist commercial zone, read the third time the second day of May 2022. And at this point, I noticed that the next in our agenda, that would be for the closed session, I assume. So we'll skip over that. Nothing on our new business, so we are at question period. Mr. Nauper, did any questions come in online or email or anything while we've been on this meeting?
Your worship, I've received no questions through email and we don't have any attendees from the public, so there's no questions.
Perfect. And we have award-winning journalist, Vicky Hogarth with us. We gave her an award, so we can definitely say that, along with Patrick. Any questions from anyone in the audience this evening? That's good. We'll be, probably on your town matters, probably answering a few in the near future. That's my shameless plug, so people watch us. So at this point, any comments from any member of council? Deputy Mayor Akaji?
First of all, I'd like to thank staff for all their work on the bylaws and whatnot, but I also would like to thank them for the Aboriginal Day, which will take place on June 21st. Please watch the website so you know what's going on. We do not have that yet finalized, but I'd like to thank both Mr. Spear and Mr. Nauper for working with the Basque to Makati people and the council and the chief, his staff, working with our staff to prepare the day. I'd like to see a lot of people out for that day, as I've seen on any other indigenous days. days, and to thank you, the people of St. Andrews, and the mayor and council, that you recognize the unceded territory of the Basque-Toumaqati people, and that you recognize the Indigenous Day or Aboriginal Day. Thank you very much, and I really appreciate it, and so does the Aboriginal people. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do in the community around that. We certainly appreciate it, and to have a member of council involved, it's certainly a good thing for the community, so thank you for your comments. Any other member of council? Make sure I don't forget Mr. Neal there. I don't see him. Okay, then, myself, I'm good, so I will be looking at eight-oh-one PM, that council move into closed session as per the Local Governance Act, Section sixty-eight-one-C, which is information that could cause financial loss or gain to a person or the local government, or could jeopardize negotiations leading to an agreement or a contract. Could I have a mover, please? Council Blanchard, a secondar. Council Hurdle? Anyone? Or Council Heenan? There we go. All in favor of going to closed session, please signify by saying aye. Go Bruins, we're in closed session.